Tom and counsel for Monday, July nineteenth. I ask you all to please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Knutson?
Here.
District one, Morissette?
Here.
District two, Yaku?
Here.
District three, Bernard?
Here.
District four, Wyland, is excused. District five, O'Malley?
Here.
District six, Virchell?
Here.
At this time, we take comments and suggestions from citizens present. If there's anyone here tonight who'd like to address the council about any item not on tonight's agenda or that might have an impact on the city of Hudson or come before the council at a future meeting, this is your chance. You can come forward and make your comments. Now, is there anyone who'd like to address the council tonight? Okay, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Could you read those, please?
To approve the regular meeting minutes and closed session minutes of July sixth, two thousand and ten with the correction of the name of the attorney. To renew the conditional use permit to valley pools and spa fifteen hundred Crestview Drive for three years to two thousand and thirteen with the conditions of the initial approval to only display pools and spas and that the display area is enclosed by a five-foot fence that can be secured. To approve claims for payment in the amount of three hundred seventy-two thousand, two hundred fifty-nine dollars and fifty-two cents. A detailed description is available in the clerk's office on request and is posted on the city's website. Two items were removed in the finance meeting. To approve the issuance of three regular operators licenses for the period July twentieth, two thousand and ten to June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, and the issuance of two temporary operators licenses to be used during the spirit of the St. Croix Art Festival September twenty-fifth to September twenty-sixth, two thousand and ten. And to approve an operator's license to Joseph David McGowan, one fifty-eight Bridgewater Trail, Hudson, Wisconsin. Additional information is available in the clerk's office on request. To approve the issuance?
Let's point out that at Finance Committee, we... Let's just remove Mr. McGowan's application and take it up.
To approve the issuance of a special event permit to the Hudson area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau for the spirit of the St. Croix Art Festival in Lakefront Park, September twenty-fourth through twenty-seventh, two thousand and ten, with the requirement of signage near the parking lot entrance notifying the public that parking space is available for persons with disabilities and that all signage be picked up at the completion of the event and to designate the event as a community event and to allow a reduction in the amount of required insurance coverage as submitted. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B, Class B retailers license to the Hudson area Chamber of Commerce and Tourism Bureau to sell beer and wine, September twenty-fifth and sixth, two thousand and ten, at the spirit of the St. Croix Art Festival in Lakefront Park. To approve the issuance of a temporary Class B, Class B retailers license to St. Patrick's Church to sell beer and wine, October first through third, two thousand and ten, at the annual fall festival at fifteen hundred Vine Street. To authorize the city administrator to proceed with filling the part-time deputy court clerk position. To approve advertising for quotes for new doors with remote openers to be installed on the fire department side of the public safety building. To place on file the quarterly report of the fire department and the building inspector and the EMS commission minutes of July eighth, two thousand and ten, and the public utility commission minutes of July thirteenth, two thousand and ten. That is all.
Move for approval.
There's a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call vote?
Morissette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Virchell?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Yaku?
Yes.
All right, the consent agenda is approved. That'll take us to Plan Commission, item number one, conditional use permit application to erect a twenty-four-foot by seventy-six-foot temporary classroom at twelve thirty-two Fifth Street, north of the Trinity Academy parking lot. Applicant is Good Shepherd Christian Academy. We discussed this at the Plan Commission and recommended approval. Denny is here to tell you about it, and also Mr. Patrick Richter is here representing the school. Denny?
Again, this is a request by Good Shepherd Christian Academy to have a temporary classroom facility at the Trinity Lutheran Church facility at the corner of Fifth and St. Croix. The zoning ordinance will allow temporary structures for a two-year period. Again, their desires have it for two years with possibility of a third year. Plan Commission recommends approval of the conditional use permit to allow Good Shepherd Christian Academy to have a temporary classroom structure for two years with the condition that the recommendations of the building inspector, there's a memo dated July eighth, two thousand and ten, and fire inspector memos, July sixth, two thousand and ten, which deal of building cold issues, be complied with prior to issuing sub- and occupancy permit. Mr. Patrick Richter is here tonight, and also I believe representatives from Trinity Lutheran Church, if there's any questions.
Did you resolve the issue of those trees?
It's my understanding, I had suggested maybe alternative configuration of the building be considered to save the trees. After discussion with Trinity Church, they said that they may be removing the trees within a relatively short time anyway, if that building would not be going there for your playground equipment or other purposes. So, so I saw it for, they're not, the trees, my concern was, are you taking trees out for temporary use? Church is telling me that there is other uses for that area of their property other than this in the future.
Are they gonna replace them?
Well, I can't answer that question.
Right.
Move for approval.
There's a motion to approve.
Second.
Second. There's a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. And the application's approved. So, we'll issue a conditional use permit for two years, with the conditions that the staff had put on are all met. All right, that takes us to Finance Committee, and there's a couple of things under applications for operators licenses, number three, we had that on consent agenda, but in the Finance Committee, I want to point out a change that we made there. The application from Mr. McGowan for a operator's license had been recommended for denial based on past violations, and new information came to light, and at the meeting Lieutenant Larson brought forth that if he had known then what he knows now, he would have recommended approval. The thing that changed was that despite the fact there was a conviction in two thousand and six, just under five years ago, that offense actually happened in two thousand and one. There have been no more offenses since two thousand and one. At our last meeting, when we discussed a somewhat similar situation, we talked about having a policy, we've got, I would call it an informal policy, that offenses five years ago and less would tend to carry more weight, and older offenses than that, less. The idea that if someone's actually turned their life around, that we ought not be holding the past transgressions against them. I'll say that we looked at this pretty closely. I mean, the offenses were serious offenses back at the time, but the recommendation from the Finance Committee then was to go ahead and approve, or to recommend to you to approve the application for Mr. McGowan.
So moved.
There's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
Just like to note to the council that while the rap sheet was longer than you would like, it seemed to all, all charges seemed to stem from one single incident.
Any other discussion? I think there were several incidences, and I think Lieutenant Larson and Catherine had researched this thoroughly. Several of them, though, were for offenses that didn't pertain as much to serving alcohol. That said, I think we've discussed it enough. Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, so we'll approve the application for his operator's license. That would take us down to number eight then, which is to consider adoption of an odd-even parking ordinance and the funding for it. This has been discussed at some length in a subcommittee of the Public Safety Committee over the past several months. It did not get a chance to be formally discussed at the Public Works Committee. That said, I think the members there are pretty aware of it and we're okay with it coming here for discussion as council of the whole, committee of the whole, by the council. We discussed it in the Finance Committee. The recommendation is for a first reading.
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for first reading of ordinance number twelve dash ten, which is to consider adoption of an odd-even parking ordinance and the funding for it. Any discussion? Mary?
Well, I don't have a problem going with a first reading, however, I was kind of, I would like to see it go back to Public Works for more work. I have some concerns. I agree, and I believe that we need something in place. I agree that it's a prob, there's a problem, and I think that it would help if we have something in place, however, the odd-even ordinance right now would greatly affect Red Cedar Canyon, as there's about eleven streets, one hundred and seventy-nine homes that would be affected because they have either only even on both sides of the streets or only odd. And I know there's been talk of cul-de-sacs being exempt, but again, that's still like sixty percent, seventy percent of Red Cedar Canyon, and our cul-de-sacs aren't like three-home cul-de-sacs, they're like thirteen-home cul-de-sacs where the streets are somewhat longer. So, I have great concerns in that area of the ordinance. I would be more apt to, like, I would like to see a snow emergency possibly in place. I think it could, it could do the same thing, and it would affect the residents for a less amount of days versus five months out of the year. I mean, there's really nowhere for them to park if they have to park on the streets if both sides of the streets are even on an odd day. So, that's one of my greatest concerns, besides the fact that I don't feel there's a real big problem in areas like Red Cedar Canyon, Heritage Greens, and all-around district too. I think we're regulating an area that doesn't need to be regulated, but I empathize with the concern that we have in Public Works, and if we can minimize the regulation in some way with a snow emergency, I'd be more accepting of such an ordinance.
Can I address the issue of, and there are some exceptions in Red Cedar Canyon where, believe it or not, both sides of the road have even-numbered houses, which I'd really hope in the future we might look into when some of these subdivisions go in, because that is something that maybe shouldn't have happened. In the city of Eagan, they have a similar situation, and they simply sign one side of the street to say, during odd-even parking, this side is designated as odd, or some such verbiage. So, I mean, it can be addressed. There are still two sides to the street, so we can designate which one can be parked on. Part of what we tried to do in the subcommittee, and it was comprised of members of Public Safety and Public Works, was to minimize the inconvenience to residents and maximize the efficiency of our Public Works Department during core work hours. You know, the time was moved to seven AM to four PM, you know, cities like Eagan go six AM to six PM. We really tried to tailor it so that a large majority of the cars that are in the road would be, people would be gone to work, would be gone to school, and we're not telling people, "You can't park on the road." We are just saying, "Please think about where you're parking on the road." We spend a lot of money plowing streets in the city, and when cars are parked, you know, in various locations, it does greatly reduce the efficiency of our Public Works Department. And that means in the spring, when there's been ice buildup, crews go out just to clean up what they haven't been able to get at during the winter, because cars have been parked in various locations that make it difficult to get around. So, we're looking for something that's predictable for residents so they can plan ahead, something that's predictable for Public Works, so they can also plan their work schedules. You know, a lot of discussion's gone into this. If there are some minor cases we need to look at, you know, I think there's still time to do that, but we'd really like to get something in place so that notification can go out in the August water bills and this fall, so that there's time to notify the public about it. So, that's all I have.
Before we have more discussion, maybe it would be good for me to read the pertinent parts of this, so the public that's listening can understand what's being proposed. "There shall be odd-even parking on all city streets from November fifteenth to April fifteenth of each year between the hours of seven AM and four PM, Monday through Friday." The idea is that at night, you could park on either side, and during the summer and the shoulder seasons, also you could park on either side, but in the heart of the snowplowing season, then during the daytime, you would need to park on either the odd side or the even side during working hours, with the idea that that frees it up for the crews to come through and do cleanup curb-to-curb. Yes?
I just have three points for discussion, so when it goes back to committee. You know, we argued last meeting about money for signs and the sign budget. Now, you're pretty passionate about, you know, you're tired of everybody coming to Public Works looking for this. The second one is the towing thing you discussed in Finance. You, you're gonna call a towing service, you're gonna add that extra expense, we gotta put those towed cars, vehicles somewhere, where do we put 'em? And then, if we start exempting sections of the city, I believe we've had discussions in the past, both Public Safety and this body, about cookie-cutting ordinance to each part of the city, and some of the strongest voices were people pushing an odd-even parking ordinance that were opposed to cookie-cutting everything else in between, you know? Does that make sense? If not, I'll be quiet, but I don't think, if we're gonna do it, you do it all or none. Don't cookie-cut it into pieces. And I do kind of favor, I'm leaning more towards agreeing with emergency, declaring an emergency somehow. Just points for conversation.
I do have a question about that, Randy, because we've touched on that briefly once in the past. I don't know how we could alert our citizens to a snow emergency, because there is no media for Hudson other than a weekly newspaper. So, I, as a mechanical thing, I just don't know how we would do it. I don't think it can be done, actually.
Can I make a suggestion on that? I would think that if we can alert our citizens if a school is closing by an emergency through carry eleven, why can't we do that with the city of Hudson being into a snow emergency or Channel Five? That's how we alert that schools are closing without, you know? Also, something else, I just lost my train of thought, but that would be, I forgot my second point at this moment to what you were saying.
Well, if I could speak to that for just a second, because I'm in that business, you'll find the media will do school closings. They don't do odd-even parking except to announce at the beginning of the season that odd-even parking's in effect.
Right, I wouldn't suggest we do odd-even parking via snow emergency. I would suggest that we do something similar to Woodbury, which, correct me if I'm wrong, because you read it to me when you looked it up, that it'd be no parking on the street from November, it'd be an ordinance that would say something like, "No parking in the street from November to April." If there is two inches of snow that fall or more, which is, I believe, the amount of snow that, that requires the plows to come out, that's when you guys plow. So, two inches of snow fall or more, you can't park on the street until the street is clear. So, it'd be no parking at all, not odd, not even. You don't park on the street until the street is clear. The reason why I think that's important, important also, is because even if we exempt places like Heritage Greens, where the whole subdivision is no parking on one side, we're not, we're saying, "You don't have to do odd-even, you just can stay parked on that one side." Well, how are we gonna clear that one side of the street then, from ice, if they never have to move their car from that one side of the street because we exempted it, because they already have parking set up where they don't have, am I talking in circles? They have parking set up where it's no parking on this side of the street. So, they're exempt from the ordinance according to how we're gonna lay this out right now. So, now Public Works will never really get a clear shot at that one side of the street that they can park on, because they're never forced to move to the other side of the street.
But that's no different than it is right now.
Well, right, but, but that's why I'm saying that this ordinance isn't changing the current problem, but it's a snow emergency where we have cars completely come off the street. If it snows two inches or more, it does change the problem we have right now, and it blankets the whole city.
Anyone else who hasn't spoken yet?
I think, we looked at that, Mary, and I think one of the things we thought about that that is really on our son, our citizens. There's no parking at all with two inches. How did I know it was gonna snow? I went to bed last night, and there was no snow predicted, and now it's snowed two inches, and now the, we start ticketing towing cars at five o'clock in the morning, because I parked in front of my house the night before. I didn't know it was gonna snow. I mean, that's, we talked about that, because I think that puts a more of a, puts a harder emphasis on our, on the citizens to, I don't know, pay attention more.
There's, there's, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
There's also an issue in that there are areas of town where there is no off-street parking, and, you know, if I could speak for Lee in his absence, that was one concern he had in his neighborhood, is there are some locations where the residents don't have off-street parking. So, we didn't want to get it to a point where we said, "No parking in the road at all for a certain length of time when people have nowhere to park." So, we thought we struck what was a happy medium, and, you know, Randy, we have to have some exemptions for places like the Third Street Hill, where there's only parking on one side of the road. Those exempted areas...
The Third Street Hill, that's the one, no, that was St. Croix, never mind.
But those exempted areas, Tom, you correct me if I'm wrong, the exempted areas are the areas downtown, around the schools, where they would plow first. They'd plow from four AM to seven AM, they'd get those cleared out, and then the rest of the city would be clear from seven AM to four PM.
I'd like to address maybe a couple of concerns that Randy had in regards to the cost of the signs. I showed this one at the Finance, this is a, just a sign that we, we're thinking about putting at some of the entrances to the, you know, the city. There's like nine locations, I just, the cost for those signs are about six hundred and thirty-seven dollars with the signs and the posts.
Okay, but what I heard in Finance, Tom, was that we're looking at signing all, if we do this exempt part, we gotta sign all of Red Cedar or Heritage. We got all sorts of signs we're gonna end up putting up, and now all of a sudden, you know, we're always been accused, or I've been accused by some of the folks here, "I like to sign the death out of everything." That's not the case, and now I'm getting it that you guys wanna sign everything that we exempt. Now, where's that money coming from?
Smaller signs would be less than that, of course, you know, we, for the informational signs, for, if we would consider the cul-de-sacs exempt or things like that. As regards to like Heritage Greens and areas that have no parking on one side or the other, one thing to consider is that the city does have a twenty-four-hour parking ordinance. Those vehicles should not be there every, I mean, constantly, they should be moved within twenty-four hours. So, if the police would enforce that, that would take care of that issue. One thing I would like to add to the ordinance if we get going on that, is they can't move it like ten feet or two, you know, just roll it over so the chalk marks move. It should be moved a certain distance, a half a block or so many feet, is what I'd like to incorporate into that ordinance. So, that would take care of maybe that issue.
So, if we get down to the other issue of towing, not to keep this going, I mean, Lieutenant Larson, where are you gonna put these impound? We don't have an impound. The county has an impound.
Can I speak to that?
Yeah, we're in, we're in free discussion here, Lori.
There was no discussion of towing unless there's a vehicle that continues to be a problem, snowfall after snowfall after snowfall. We're gonna be ticketing vehicles, you know, our police can address if there are certain vehicles that are not being moved. This is not a snow emergency where in the middle of the night we come and tow your car. That's not at all what we're talking about. I mean, that's what we'd like to avoid. A lot of this is education, and it's getting people in the habit of thinking about where they park their car when it's snowing and when the plows are coming through. It's a, it's some, a plan that I think has some predictability to it and not a surprise factor, or I didn't know.
Well, no, thank you. I mean, I wanted you to make sure the public knows what we're, our plan is, and that's why I'm...
Yeah, and, yeah, I think you were in our last discussion where we talked about the fact, and Marty's not here either, but this is not a revenue generating program, it's not a, you know, a plan to tow every vehicle that's in the way. It's a plea, I guess, for cooperation from our residents.
Anyone else? Yes?
It's a snow emergency or odd-even, whatever it is, I still have a hundred and seventy-nine homes that we have, that will have a problem with this, and I don't think eleven signs in Red Cedar Canyon is the answer. I don't think people will be very happy seeing, you know, signs of Red Cedar Canyon on each street. You know, some of these streets are through streets, they're not all cul-de-sacs that are the problem. My street's a through street, there's twenty homes on there that are all even-numbered, for example. That's when I realized this, was over the weekend, when I looked across the street and I'm like, "Hey." You know, so, I just, I, I would, I would just like to see it go back to committee to try and fix these little problems. I'm not saying I don't wanna see something pass, I just want the problems fixed so we can, you know, pass something that would be, that would try and work it out for the whole city. I think there's, I have to be strong on this, especially when it's a hundred and seventy-nine homes, it's not four. It's a hundred and seventy-nine homes.
I, I think I can maybe offer a couple of ways that we could get around some of those problems. I've, I've had my reservations about this, but it's been thoroughly discussed in committee, and I think the consensus of the council is that they wanna do this, and so it has continued to move forward. I like this plan better than the plan that was gonna be all year round, just so that people didn't have to remember differently in the winter. That seemed like a big overreach, and I still think this might be a bit of overreach in that there may be months of this period every year when the streets are completely dry and clear, and yet we're imposing a burden. Well, yes?
Just another, in that regard, I'd like to address, say that...
Say, for instance, if the streets weren't covered with snow, that's another opportunity for us to do like trimming trees and things like that, and that would help us in that regard also.
Okay. So, there may be advantages to that. I think no matter what you construct, it may be inadequate to solve the problem in some areas, and we've heard some of those tonight. For example, the situation where there's already no parking allowed on one side and everyone has to park on the other side. So, you're not gonna really solve the problem there, because we'll have to exempt them. It might be overkill in some neighborhoods where it's really not needed, and that's been one of my concerns, is whether it should be a zoned thing in the problem areas. Staff is recommending that it be everywhere, so you have to accept that. I think this issue of signage, I say that, no, we don't have a media outlet, but if it's going to work to post signs like that at seven locations around town, and you're going to educate both our citizens and our visitors with those seven signs, then I don't see why we couldn't post the same seven signs that say, "Snow emergency in effect for the next two weeks" or something like that, and let people know. It's an education thing first, it's ticketing second, and then it's towing third. You're not gonna be able to clear the ice until you go through, you know, enough to get no cars parked there, which occasionally is going to mean towing people. So, I think the signage of a snow emergency could be accomplished. I think for the Red Cedar situation, where it seems crazy to me that we made whole streets that are all even, but... Let's just, let me finish my thought, and then you can address that. My thought would be, maybe we could write into the ordinance that where it is all odd or all even, that we could make the north side of the street or the west side of the street would be designated even, and the south or the east would be designated odd, and the people will quickly learn in those areas, and/or we will educate them through all our other means. Put little green notices on their, on their windshield. Not the tickets, I didn't mean that, I meant a friendly reminder. Not the tickets, I didn't mean that, I meant a friendly reminder notice. Danny, tell us the history of how we have-
Like in my neighborhood, that's how it is, in my cul-de-sac, they're all odd. So this wouldn't really work in my whole neighborhood.
Part of that goes back, once we started having curvilinear streets in the city of Hudson, the address system's based on the old gridiron system. West side's odd, east side's even. North side's odd, south side's even. You can't apply that in a lot of subdivisions anymore. And the intent that we were trying to get to at staff is getting the emergency vehicles to be able to find those residences or businesses. So, so the numbering system was based more on trying to get emergency, it's not for parking, it's for emergency purposes. So, I mean, you know, we got a high, you, you gotta, we totally had basically throw out. You got streets, I'll start out going east-west, go south, and then they're back going east-west again. Well, if you try to provide any kind of consistency of numbering system, that north-south-east-west system goes totally out the window. So we had to come up with a hybrid system to try to get the emergency vehicles in and identify those locations as best possible. So I mean, you know, if I had known six years ago or twenty years ago and we're gonna have this odd even conversation tonight, maybe I would've thought differently. I didn't have that crystal ball at times, so. But the purpose of the numbering system in some of those newer areas is to try to get those emergency vehicles in with the least amount of having to look at. And if you, if you try to keep a consistent number, we just, it, the old system that we used originally in the city of Hudson doesn't work in those areas.
All right.
May I ask a question of Tom? Tom, you don't have to get up to the, it's just a yes or no. In cul-de-sacs, we go from tandem axle to a single axle truck to make that tight turn. If we were to have half of the cul-de-sac designated as odd, the other half as even, so all cars were on one semi-circle, does that give the single axle truck enough room to turn and plow? If it's a long answer, you gotta come up here.
First of all, any cul-de-sac's difficult.
Yeah, that's why I asked the question.
Actually, some other, usually, a lot of times we run a loader or our graders articulate so we can get some of those in there also, that actually helps. But the, actually, the best thing that works is the front end, front end loader with the plow.
Okay. So it would cost us more, but we could do the cul-de-sacs if each cul-de-sac was, had a semi-circle of cars on one side?
Sure.
Designated it as odd or even. Okay, thanks.
Well, considering that those things such as your solution right there is not in the current first draft, there was discussion of sending this back to committee, but that's not the motion on the table. The motion on the table is to approve a first reading, which would imply that it'll come back for a second reading at our next meeting. Do you feel, uh, did you make the motion?
Yes, and I can rescind it if the council will send it back to, uh, to committee.
Well, it's your motion and I'm just pointing out that I think, I mean, you just brought up something that would be an amendment. Do you wanna work on an amendment here? Do you want it to go to a committee for that? Do you wanna have staff do it? How would you like it to be amended before it comes back?
I'm gonna rescind my motion for a first reading so that we can have a opening for a motion to have both staff and committee work on this further.
Okay. Which committee should we send it to?
Public Works.
Public Works?
Yeah. Because it, it seems to have more mechanical problems than the overall-
I'm just trying to clarify your motion.
Yeah.
He's got the signed budget.
All right. So there's a motion-
Uh, I'm rescinding my motion.
Rescinding your motion?
Yeah.
And offer us another motion?
Yes, I'm offering, uh, I'm moving that this be sent back to Public Works so that Public Works staff and committee can work on it further.
Okay.
A second then.
There's a second, any discussion? All in favor, was that a, your mouth, your lips were moving when the sound came out?
I'm getting ready.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no? Okay, and that motion passed and we'll go on to number ten, which is a recommendation from the revolving loan fund committee in regard to a request from Tom Scanlon Indu Sales and Services Incorporated for St. Croix Business Park Loan Funds for Equipment and Parking Lot Improvements.
And the finance committee recommended approval. Also, there's a recommendation of approval from the revolving loan fund committee and also through, uh, Shaw Gurning with the West Central Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission, uh, who does the initial credit analysis, uh, for these loans. Uh, the loan, uh, applications go to the revolving loan fund committee, which currently is comprised of two members, we're looking for a third member of the committee. One's a banker, one's a CPA. They do a thorough analysis, I think they always do an outstanding job reviewing these loans. Uh, the loan request is for sixty-four thousand dollars, thirty thousand. And that, uh, loan request would be used for a grinder, uh, machine that grinds, uh, floors so they can, uh, lay new floors in basically food processing, uh, facilities. The balance of money would be used for parking lot improvements. Uh, there's a large, long list of, uh, conditions and covenants, uh, which is typical for these loans. Basically, it's a sixty-four thousand dollar loan to Indu Sales and Services, four point two-five percent interest rate, seven-year term amortization, monthly interest payments. Uh, we'll have first lien on the, on the grinder equipment and subordinate lien, uh, on the, basically the money is to be used for the parking lot, uh, that'll be on property. Also, personal guarantees by Mr. Scanlon and by, uh, J.C. Properties, which is the property owner. Um, and then there's a number of covenants. Uh, one of the covenants is, uh, the creation of two full-time jobs, six part-time jobs in the next two years. Mr. Scanlon, even with these part-time jobs, are making eighteen dollars an hour plus, plus, uh, to get per diem and travel because they work a lot of weekends, uh, in these food facilities when they're closed down. Mr. Scanlon's here today to answer any questions you may have of him. He does have a previous loan, he's always been, uh, on time on his loan payments. And, um, we're pleased to recommend approval of this loan.
Okay, there's a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no? All right. Loan's approved, thank you. That takes us to the backside, we are on the home stretch. Update on projects. I think I saw, well, there he is, he's up, he's moving.
Good evening, council. Uh, first I'd like to start off with the two thousand and nine street improvement project. Uh, we did have a meeting onsite with the contractor, um, uh, he did indicate that-
What site, I'm sorry, that, at what site?
Oh, the Beadham and Farm site. The two thousand street improvement project was a seal code work that was, that occurred last year. And, uh, the contractor did indicate that, you know, he's not walking away from this and he does wanna see this issue resolved and fixed. Tomorrow morning at nine fifteen, uh, the pavement specialist I was talking about finally got approval from his boss to come over here and so, uh, there, there's a meeting tomorrow morning, they'll, they'll look at it because what we don't wanna do is, uh, recommend some sort of solution that creates two other problems. Uh, we wanted to make sure it's the right solution that, uh, for this, the particular situation. So, uh, we'll have a better understanding of that tomorrow morning.
Any questions about the two thousand and nine street improvements? All right, let's hear about the rest.
Uh, not a heck of a lot going on, just a couple of, uh, uh, some activity on, on some of the private developments. Tire Pros is moving along, parking's been paved, some, uh, just punch list items that's down to. Heritage cottages, that's with the exception of Hope Circle, um, that's been paved as well and we're com- working on a, uh, punch list for that project as well. Um, any other questions regarding other private projects?
Quick one on the Goodwill property on, what is it, Seventeenth Street? There's a edge of, I don't know if they've got their final layer of blacktop then?
No.
Street side?
When I put this together on Thursday, they thought they might be able to get in there on Friday, I haven't heard from my-
They were in there, but there's still a lip on the roadside. It's not level with our road, with our pavement. So I'm just-
Okay.
Follow up with them.
So where their, where their driveway meets your pavement?
Where they had to do the curb cut all the way down Seventh Street to Cooley.
They did a pavement cut about twelve, fifteen inches out from where they put in the new curb and they repaved in there? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, and there's, there's still a lip. And they did their final course in, in the parking lot. It doesn't look like they finished out there, I don't know.
Yeah, and I, I haven't looked at that specifically, uh, Randy, but I know some of that base was kinda soft and things and so they maybe just delayed that work somewhat.
Just be on checking it.
Appreciate it.
Okay, any other questions on projects? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next we've got, uh, to consider, uh, to review and consider modifying the conditions of approval for the certificate of compliance for child daycare. Little Minds Learning Center, twenty-four hundred Flo- Foxglove Way, Todd Barnhart. The plan commission discussed this and recommended approval of an amendment to the certificate of compliance for Little Minds Learning Center daycare to remove the conditions that the outdoor play area can only be used between the hours of ten AM and four PM and that the number of children allowed in the outdoor play area be limited to a maximum of fifteen children.
Mr. Todd Barnhart from Little Minds Learning Center is here tonight to discuss the issue with the common council. Again, the plan commission recommended removing the outdoor play area conditions. Uh, I did receive a phone call a couple of years ago from the Department of, um, you know, Department of Health and Family Services expressing concern that this daycare had been limited and no others in the city of Hudson had been limited. Uh, again, the original, uh, restriction was due to the proximity to those, uh, residential units, but again, we do have daycares that are just as close to residential areas than this one is. Again, uh, the only thing that would be, the original hours of operation were six to eight-thirty on weekdays, Saturdays on, uh, from six to six PM. State of Wisconsin group care licenses required to be maintained and in fans not to exceed six feet height in close play. Those conditions are still staying. What the plan commission's recommending is just removing the number of children and the hours that, uh, the play area is restricted to. I have tried occasionally just to go down and listen without being announced. Uh, generally, it's kids playing. And, um, so, I mean, that does create some noise, certainly does, but, um, you know, I don't think it necessarily adds an all that bad of a sound either at times.
I'll move to approve on committee recommendation to, uh, amend the certificate of compliance to remove conditions limiting the number.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second to amend the, um, certificate of compliance.
May I ask a question of Danny? Danny, you had mentioned you were going to try to talk to the neighbors before tonight's meeting.
I was not able to.
Not able to, okay.
I have a question.
I did, I did ask Mr. Barnhart if he'd, you know, because when we, in the process of discussing this issue, I encouraged him to try to talk to the neighborhood. Uh, he conveyed to me that, you know, neighbors have been in, have talked to him. Um, you know, your balls going over fences, returning balls or things. And generally, that, you know, there's not been negative comments made to him, so. I, I, I don't wanna portray that to be speaking for the neighborhood, but, uh, at least Mr. Barnhart maybe would welcome the opportunity to comment on that.
Danny, are there, uh, are there zoning areas within the city where a daycare facility is in allowed use rather than a certificate of compliance? Or are, is it a certificate-
No, in, in the, um, in the business districts, it's required to have a certi- compliance. In some residential areas, particularly the multiple family, or, I should say, only in the multiple family residential, if you're over eight, uh, children, anything under eight children is allowable by state statutes in any residential area. If you go over eight, then, uh, if you're in the multiple family, then we would require a conditional use permit versus certificate of compliance.
But go back to the business areas then. Are there not some uses in business areas that are just in allowed use where you don't require a certificate of compliance?
Absolutely, more retail.
What's the idea behind in the zoning code having a certificate of compliance required for every daycare, no matter where they are? So you can't come to the city of Hudson without having a certificate of compliance if you wanna have a commercial daycare?
The intent is to allow the city to look at situations, there may be specific situations, may be different in commercial areas that we may want to say that there, there are reasonable restrictions that we would wanna put on it. I think we felt as a city that these, you know, this playground restriction was reasonable at the time. We didn't have any negative comment from Department of Health and Family Services at that time. Uh, but after, uh, they, because generally, you know, it takes them a while to get the license, um, approved to these daycare providers, um, and then the issue came up. They're, they're wanting us to treat this daycare just like we would any others, which we do not restrict the outdoor play areas.
Well, but that's my point that I would like to make is, is that we should either defend our prerogative as a city to put and impose restrictions under that certificate of compliance criteria, or we should remove it and just have them be allowed. I mean, if, if that's what they're saying, then there's never special circumstances. And in zoning, typically you've got a boundary area where you've got, you know, here's a business, zone business, and here's residents right next door. And it, that's the perfect situation where we wanna be able to retain the right to impose some conditions. So I kind of, I resisted it last time when the state licensing people wanna come in and say, well, hey, you can't put conditions on them, you aren't doing it on anybody else. Well, the whole idea of it in our zoning code is that there's unique property locations that may, uh, require or, or justify having some conditions. So I, I, I hope that it doesn't go in the minutes and the record that from now on, there'll be no restrictions on a daycare that wants to go in, because I think there could be. And if not, then we should change them and make an allowable use in business district.
Right, and I certainly understand your point. I, I think the thing is, if, let's use for example, the children's center at St., or at, uh, near the old, uh, library across Kitty Corner. If we had had our restrictions on play for that one, this issue would never came up from the state. They're just saying, if you're gonna apply, I mean, they're, they're looking at that being a similar facility in a residential area, why didn't we apply restrictions on that one? And in this case, we're treating it, at least in their minds, differently.
Yep. And I understand that, my comment is not saying I'm opposed to making this change, but just defending our right to impose restrictions. Okay, anyone else?
But I, I just, but also I did relate to the state when they compared that, that, that daycare had been in Hudson for thirty-some years. And we weren't gonna go back and all of a sudden modify, put conditions on it that weren't there before. So it wasn't an apples and apples comparison necessarily.
Correct, and there are places where the residence, yes, it's adjacent to a residence, but it's across the street from a residence, which is different from being across a fence.
Right, absolutely.
Standpoint of noise. Anyone else?
Could Madam Clerk let the minutes reflect that the vote tonight is on this specific circumstance and is not signaling, signaling a change in policy for the city?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say no? All right.
No more restrictions.
Thanks. All right, next item is to consider amending the library's lease agreement for seven hundred First Street. At the library board meeting last week, we discussed this. Um, I attended, the library board considered whether they would be willing to allow us to sell the property on Second Street that we purchased along with the new police station library building. And we call that seven oh one Second Street. We have entered a sale agreement, purchase agreement back in June to sell it for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Because the library has an option to buy the entire property, all the land and both the bills- the buildings, we need to enter an agreement with them to amend their lease and option to purchase agreement with us. And so what we came up with in the spirit of the original intent that we would sell them the building for what we paid for it plus an adjustment factor to help pay for our costs of owning the building, carrying the building, financing the building and so on. The original was that we bought it for 2.5 million and their adjustment factor would be $125,000 per year. What we agreed upon is that if the sale goes through, their purchase would be reduced by the amount of the sale price and the annual adjustment factor would go down from 125,000 a year down to 112,000 a year. What this means is that if they would choose to execute the purchase as of January first next year, the price for them would be 2.352 million. And then each year after that, it would go up by 112,000. So January first of 2012, it would be 2,464,000 and so on. I think it's fair for all the parties. I explained to them that they're not really in a position to renegotiate our sale agreement, but they are in a position to veto it. And I think they understand that and I think this is good. You have anything to add?
No, you gave a very fair representation of what occurred at the meeting and this is a simple reduction on both sides to a similar amount. The city has seen fit to sell a building that the library has an option on, the library is saying, that's fine with us, you can do that, but since now the property is reduced, it's a smaller chunk of property that the library will be buying, will be reducing by the amount of money you get for the 701 building. It's just simple math. Catherine, do you need suspension of the rules to consider this?
No, but I did want to just point out, I revised the addendum just to clarify the language, that the escalator goes into effect January one, 2011. In the original agreement, it said 2010 and I don't think that was the intent for anyone. And that the escalator goes into effect January one of each year, so that the option price for that year is, includes the entire escalator.
That was my question I had, was that it goes up each January after.
Correct. And this revision says that clearly, hopefully.
Yes, it does.
I'll move for approval of the amended ordinance, or more amended.
Purchase.
And we'll need to provide this, of course, to the president of the library board, but this was the language, I understand that he also.
I'll second.
No, I was there when he agreed to it.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no. Motion passed. All right, that's going to take us on to, oh, wait a minute, I must have skipped at least one thing. Uh-oh. Elevator didn't get on for all of this.
Yes, it did. It was on, it ended up, it was sent out, but it wasn't on.
All right, I skipped that one, or maybe I didn't skip it.
No.
It's coming next. I knew it was supposed to be there. Okay, so the item is consider the elevator maintenance contract for 701st Street.
There is a memo in front of you on your, at your place. The elevator company has provided two options for a one-year contract, the maintenance contract, which is what you had at nine eleven, which is more comprehensive and includes cost of repair, would be $490 a month. That's quite a bit higher, but it's only for a year, so basically they've covered themselves, is my interpretation. The other option he offered was the, it's called the bronze, it's an exam and, monthly exam and lube type contract at a cost of $150 a month. And so it just assures that someone's looking at it, making sure the basic, I mean, I don't know anything about elevators, but basic things are covered. And if there's, needs to be a repair, they'll tell you and then you pay for it.
Don't we have a, isn't it a brand new elevator?
No, this is for the old one, built in ninety-five.
Oh, the other, okay, okay.
This is the police department.
Okay, okay.
You recall, we bought the building and there were no existing contracts or, there was nothing that we inherited in the way of maintenance contract with it. But the issue here was that we did have a contract that we had on Fourth Street.
It's just the same company?
It's the same company, the issue is that there was some language in the contract that meant that even though we no longer own the building, we either continued to pay them or we moved that contract somewhere else. So this has been a negotiated thing, I think we should go with the bronze, I recommend the bronze maintenance contract.
And Tom, and I think you should make it clear that it's subject to releasing that nine eleven contract. That's my understanding, but I want to be able to make that clear to.
That we enter this one and then they'll release us from our other contract.
Well, I will move that we enter this one at the bronze level and a conditional upon their releasing us from the previous agreement.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion passed. Elevator maintenance contract. We'll talk with them and see if we can do that.
I agree with that.
All right, next we would have closed session, communications and recommendations of the mayor. All right, on your table tonight, I've got a memo, I don't know if you guys have read it, I'm going to give you a chance to read it because I want you to think about this, I'm not trying to pull a fast one on you. I've thought about this, did I skip anything? Thought about this a lot and over time, when, when I was elected, Jack Bro had been on the St. Croix Business Park and he put the corporation together, had served on the board, had served as the president of the board. I gave you a brief rundown here and I'll just read parts of it to you. It's a three-member board of directors. So the city gets the right to appoint one member, Excel Energy gets the right to appoint one member, and then between the two of them, they have to unanimously agree on the third member. The way this has worked since the inception of the Business Park Corporation is that Jack, as mayor, served as the city's representative member. And Excel has had a couple, two or three different representatives of their corporation serve, and then we have generally had either a banker or business development, someone interested in business development, or most recently, we've had a former council member serve as the third member. We have the right at any time to appoint someone different as our representative. Dick Pearson, the former alderperson from Randy's district, has been serving and he recently submitted his resignation. And as I've studied this and thought about it, the, the citizen member cannot be replaced but by unanimous vote of the two other members. It makes it much more a permanent membership. The council's member is subject to the whims of this council or a future council as to when that person might be replaced with someone else. And it could happen that it happened through an election change or some other control. And I think that the contribution that former mayor Bro has made has been considerable, his guidance and leadership and experience there is invaluable. And my recommendation is actually that I'd like to see him be appointed as the community representative to serve in that capacity as long as he would like to. The way to accomplish this is actually to replace him as the city's representative. And while I don't necessarily seek this for myself, I think it would be appropriate in the future for the mayor to serve as the city's representative on the Business Park Board. I'll also point out that there's, in their bylaws, the right for any representative to authorize their own designated representative, in other words, a surrogate to go and serve. So Excel could designate a surrogate person to serve indefinitely and have full voting powers and so on, and it's, that's up to the member. So any one member. So example, if we took the practice of having the mayor be the designated representative of the city, the mayor in turn could authorize someone else to serve in that capacity and change that person or go and represent themselves at any particular point in time. So what I'm recommending is two things, that I'd like to appoint myself in my capacity as mayor to serve as the city's member of the board of directors of the St. Croix Business Park Corporation, and I'd like your consent for that appointment. And then I would like to nominate Jack Bro to be considered as the third member of the board and I will ask for unanimous consent for his appointment at the next meeting of the board.
I'll move for approval.
A second.
There's a motion in a second, any discussion? Have any concerns over this? I'm fairly certain that he'll be approved and I think it'll be a seamless move from being a potentially temporary appointment to being a much more permanent appointment for Jack.
I agree with you a hundred percent on his capacity there and his usefulness to the city. And I wonder if to guarantee that we do not lose his services, and this has nothing to do with your being appointed at, but if we make one conditional upon the other, that is, we don't set foot off one shore before we have a foot on the farther shore. And that is to say that we change the motion to have Jack Bro nominated as the citizen and then we can take up the city representative. So if he is not elected by the three-member group, he still stays as the city representative.
Yeah, it might work. I suspect he'd have to probably designate someone, well, he'd have to vote for himself because it's really just the two of them. I can tell you that the flip side of that is that it takes unanimous support between two people. And if it's me, I'm telling you, I'm not going to vote for anyone else, so it'll essentially mean it'll be a, be a two-person board until, you know, so I think it's as good as a done deal.
Well, but the distinction is that we need a unanimous vote, which we're counting on but don't have in hand, whereas by the second method, Mr. Bro stays there for certain.
You have any thoughts on that?
I haven't looked at the bylaws, first of all. I think what you could say is.
If you'd like, you could withhold your consent and wait.
I was going to say that if Mr. Bro isn't approved, then the city designation comes back to the council. I mean, make it subject to that.
Yes, that was what I was.
So that, then.
That was my point.
It comes back. So you're not, I thought what you were suggesting is appointing Jack as the city and then.
No, no, he's already the city representative.
Oh, wait for the nomination.
Yeah, move him from the city representative to the citizen representative, that has to be voted upon by the other two members. Let's secure that before we move forward. Because I think that his position there is very valuable to the city.
No doubt.
I think we can persuade him to vote for himself, maybe.
Isn't there only two members on the board right now though, if he resigned? But Mr. Pearson resigned, right?
Yes.
As of, when has he resigned? Is he not going to be at the next board meeting?
He has resigned.
So there's just two people, there's no longer.
Resignations affect either August first.
Right, there's the Excel and there's the city representative, which is Jack Bro.
Right, which is Jack and the Excel representative, which means.
There's no meeting scheduled between now and August first.
Which means he's going to be.
Well, there's no Kennedy meeting scheduled for August first. Doesn't mean, and it could be a special meeting at their request of board members to see if they'd like, if we could call them together to meet before that time.
My only intent is to guarantee his services to the city.
Well, in that case, that would mean, it would go in the opposite order. I'll ask them to meet and consider that and then if a vacancy arises in the city position, we'll bring it back to you with the nomination and ask for your consent.
Well, we do have a motion in a second though, to vote on.
He made the motion.
Alan, you made the motion this time?
I'm going to let it sit, the way it is.
You want your motion to stand?
Yep.
Who made the second? You did. And you want the motion to stand?
Alan's okay with it, I'm okay with it.
All right, so the motion in the second is to approve the original plan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say no.
No.
I think the motion passed, I heard one no. All right, any communications and items for future agendas from any alderperson? City attorney? Mr. Willie's excused tonight. And I think that's it, except for our closed session. So at this time, you could consider adjourning into closed session pursuant to section 1985 one G of Wisconsin statutes to confer with legal counsel regarding strategy relating to litigation in which the city is involved regarding the council decision on Sharon Horn Elstrom LLC liquor license renewal.
So, Booz?
Second.
There's a motion in a second to go into closed session, any discussion? Roll call vote?
Marsette?
Yes.
O'Malley?
Yes.
Firstel?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Yakub?
Yes.
All right, motion passed. Let's take about a two-minute break and we'll be in closed session.